We'll call to order the regular meeting of the Celine Area Schools Board of Education for October 8, 2013. I invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is the portion of the meeting where a member of the public may address the board briefly for up to three minutes. A request would be scheduled on a future agenda. Is there anybody from the audience who wishes to address the board this evening? Okay, Superintendent Grayden.
All right, a couple of quick announcements tonight. One, this weekend Shawn Dew will begin construction of a pavilion near the soccer field on the community, or pardon me, the campus parkway area, so just south of the campus parkway, near the gravel lot, and will begin construction of a pavilion as part of an Eagle Scout project near those soccer fields, so we're excited to see that kind of come to fruition. We've scheduled three community forums to kind of work and talk with the community members and answer questions related to the November 5th non-homestead operational millage renewal. Monday, October 28th at 7:00 PM at the Celine District Library in the Brecken Room, Tuesday the 29th at 9:15 AM at Brute Awakenings, and then Wednesday, the 30th, at noon at my favorite cafe on South Ann Arbor Street. So, three opportunities about a week before the November 5th ballot to inform our community about the importance of that issue coming up. We continue to work on the strategic framework. We had an administrative meeting today where we started to do more of a deep dive into specific action step areas, and I'll pass out a document, kind of an example of what we're working on related to one of the action items for goal number five, as we do that. And also, I'd like to congratulate the Celine Marching Band. They performed last night at the Michigan School Band and Orchestra Association District 12 marching band competitions out at John Glenn High School, and they were judged on their music, marching style, and overall effect, and all three judges gave them first division superior ratings in each category, and we're excited for them and for all their hard work. I'd also like to note that on Wednesday, this past Wednesday, was the Foundation for Celine Area Schools Building a Foundation Luncheon, where they kicked off the strategic grant campaign, and I'd like to thank the community for their support. Almost 200 community members were there, many board members were there in support of that, and hopefully we'll see that campaign and their efforts to raise funds related to next generation classrooms to be successful throughout the year. That's all I have.
Okay. Any comments from board members?
Can I just ask, are there any marching band kids here? I would expect at least one. Okay, cool.
Any other comments from board members?
Chief, I do. I just have a quick thank you to everybody that attended the culinary arts chili cook-off at Oktoberfest. It was, it turned out excellent event, and we were able to raise over $800 for hopefully our scholarship here in Maine.
Which chili won? It was, they were all very good.
You can't put that kind of pressure on me. I don't remember.
I was going for number two, I think it was.
It went the, about number 10.
No, I've taken myself out of it.
Do a crush competition.
No, but I'll get back with you on one. Just lastly and briefly, I would like to restate what Superintendent Grayden said. We do have an election Tuesday, November 5th. It's to renew the 18 mills operational millage on non-homestead property. So this does not affect individual homeowners. It's a renewal. There's no increase in taxes involved in this. We have to do this on a periodic basis, which is about every 10 years. So we need a yes vote to stay Celine strong, and you'll be hearing more about it in the coming weeks, and certainly we encourage you to get out and vote on that day. With that, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
So moved.
Chief, board, and Todd. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Scheduled reports, Superintendent Grayden.
All right, I'd like to invite high school principal Ms. Julie Helber up to celebrate the students that are here tonight.
Thank you. My name is Julie Helber. I'm the high school principal, and I'm honored to be here tonight to be able to celebrate some fantastic achievements by our students. And we have three groups of students here tonight. One is in two groups, but I'm here to announce, and I know that some of the parents know about this because they were notified through the mail, but want to make sure that it's public and that we recognize the achievements of our students this year. We have three groups, as I said. One is the 2013 National Hispanic Recognition Program students. This program was initiated in 1983. It identifies outstanding Hispanic or Latino high school students. This year, the NHRP recognized 5,300 students over a pool, there was a pool of over 259,000 students. Three of our students did get this award. They had to get a score, a qualifying score on the PSAT. They also had to have a junior cumulative GPA of 3.5 or higher to be considered a scholar, and a 3.0 to 3.49 to be considered an honorable mention student. All three of our students are considered scholars, and those students are Javier Taylor. Javier? Samantha Minette. She's not here. And Arthur West. Congratulations to those three students for that accomplishment. The second award set that I would like to talk to you about is our commended scholars program through the National Merit Program. So students last year took part in a voluntary exam, believe it or not. Yes, it's voluntary, and so we have students this year that are getting ready to take that exam later this month. They took the exam in the month of October last year, and about 1.5 million students across the United States take this exam. It's a qualifying exam for those to be recognized as commended scholars, and semifinalists eventually maybe making their way onto finalists, and potentially some really nice scholarships for them for college. So, out of 1.5 million, 34 students are considered, 34,000 students are considered commended scholars. They're named on the basis of a nationally applied selection index score. They won't continue on for National Merit scholarships, but it's very fantastic that they were commended scholar because it's, they're in the 96th percentile of all students. So it's pretty amazing, and we have six students. One has moved, but we still would like to mention her name, and I would like to announce those students are Karina M. Becker. And Nirvan, you're gonna have to help me.
He's not here.
He's not here, but what's, how do you pronounce? Batacharia. Rebecca Musdy, who's left, since left the district. Paige Smith. Javier Taylor again. And Russell Warilla. He's not here tonight. So congratulations to those folks. The third set of students have completed the same assessment back in October, but they were identified as semifinalists to the National Merit Program. There are 16,000 semifinalists, and those are students that are above the 96th percentile of students that scored. And what will happen at this point is these students now have to go through an application process where they complete several other pieces to the application, and they've all completed that so far because I've submitted, I've transmitted their information now off to the right people. There will be 15,000 semifinalists identified in February of 2014. Most of the time, if you submit your information in after you are a semifinalist, you do become a finalist. So 15,000 out of the 16,000 become finalists in 2014, and after that, there are 8,000 National Merit Scholarship winners. And so we're hoping that we'll bring back all 10 students to the board later to announce that they are all National Merit Scholarship winners. In addition to that, 1,200 students are chosen as special scholarship recipients, and they can receive scholarships from different corporations and businesses as well. And so the students that are semifinalists in the National Merit Scholarship competition this year are Andrea Blankenship. He's not here. Karina Warner. Ben Harris. Sam Osment Kowski. Hannah Quinn. Alianna Schwader. And Amelia Widding. So thank you for joining me and congratulating our students on this achievement. Thank you.
All right, before you go, and you aren't allowed to go, well you want to get one kind of group picture with everyone in it, so I'm gonna let Fran Longmore from the Celine Post kind of organize you effectively to make a great picture. We're very proud of you. Thank you.
Yeah, you guys maybe start right here and around us. Right across.
Maybe this would be one hook in right here. All right. One here, right here. Kind of arc then and around, or how? Yeah, that would be good. All right, so let's make this kind of base of the arc. I'd like to take a quick break here and introduce Heidi Finnis. Heidi, you're here to talk a little bit about the non-homestead operational millage.
Okay, thank you for inviting me. I'm not sure where to stand so you all can see. This November, we have the non-homestead operational millage, and that's something that's an important millage to the school district. It's something that the state requires us to collect a non-homestead operational millage, and that is collected on non-homestead properties, not your personal home, but non-homestead, and that helps fund the operation of the school district. Very, very important. It's about 15.75% of our operational budget here, which is equivalent to both elementary schools. That's how significant this election is. It doesn't cost anymore. It's something we're already paying, and it's something that we need to make sure we get out to the community and let them know how important that is to renew that non-homestead election on November 5th. So, want to make sure that you're aware of it, you're talking to other people, and that we're out making sure other people know that this is an important election. It's been since, 10 years since we've done the last time, and so it is very, very important to get the news out because, you know, 10 years is a long time. People forget where, how important that is. So, just wanted to let you know that that's coming up. It's very, very important to the school district, and if you have neighborhoods or groups or people that we want to make sure they're aware of that, please let me or Superintendent or even Janice Warner know, and we can bring, we can set up an arrangement to have somebody come in and explain how important this is to the district. So we just wanted to share that with you today. Thanks. Any questions?
Thanks for stepping forward.
Thank you.
And, you know, Heidi's gonna lead up the effort for this, and certainly we appreciate you taking your time. I know you rushed from Kalamazoo to get back here to be here tonight, so thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right, next up is the Liberty Club, and I'm looking for Jack Macy. So, trustee Carter?
All right. A brief presentation. I wasn't thinking my other knights made it, but just on behalf of the Knights of Columbus of Celine, just wanted to present a check for $377.10, which was from our MI Drive from this spring. And you may see the knights out with their yellow and red lettered vests soliciting donations from people over, it's not Easter, it's the weekend before Easter. What Sunday is that?
Palm Sunday.
Palm Sunday. Good Catholic I am. Goodness, all right, Palm Sunday, so.
Well, I can't thank you enough. As you know, we always have a wish list about this long, so we'll be able to definitely make good use of the funds.
Thank you very much.
So very much appreciated.
Jack, do you want to say a little bit about the program? And before you, we're also gonna want to picture that. Jack, do you want to?
For those of you who don't know, it is a day program for adults that are 26 and over. We run here in Liberty Building four days a week, and we try to provide a really strong program for all of our adults to give them opportunities to connect to the community, but also to give back to the community. So we do a lot of volunteering throughout the community, everything from working with the senior center and the preschool to delivering Meals on Wheels, and it's been a great opportunity for Lynda and myself to grow along with all of our adults. And we couldn't do it without the support of all of the people here, community ed, the board, and all the community that's been behind us. So we'd just like to thank all of you for your support.
Get a picture?
We'll move to the action items, where we have two action items this evening. The Chair will entertain a motion to certify all board members as MASB delegates for the 2013-14 school year. Do we have a motion? Trustee Zimmer, and Karen as a second. On the discussion, I think this, if those who elect to go to the state convention, which I believe is October 23rd through the 25th or 6th, they would be able to be a voting member at that convention. Are there any questions or comments regarding that? There's more information about the state convention on the MASB website. I'm gonna try to make it. I may have to be out of town during that period, but certainly if I'm in town, I'm planning to attend. It's up in Lansing. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the new class size policy as submitted by the Board Policy Committee. So moved. Todd, in second, support. And the chief. Okay, discussion. Why don't we start with trustee Zimmer, if you can go through maybe some of the background, some of the history, and how we got to the language, and then Scott, maybe you can talk about how, if we had this policy in place this year, what it would have looked like.
As many people know, class size has been a topic of discussion among parents and students and teachers and administrators for many years, and during the period of time that five to seven members in the board ran for office, one of the messages we heard from parents was, "Class size is a concern for me. I need to make sure you have, pay attention to that." So, coming to that frame of reference, we then began looking at what makes sense, how do we go about doing this, and what would be the best way of going about doing it. And fundamentally, what we learned through the research we did, looking across various places that have this policy in place, within Michigan, outside of Michigan, is really, we want to make sure we honor the collective bargaining agreement that exists between the, in our case, the SEA and the school board, so that becomes a driving element to the policy. We also wanted to make sure that we had transparency and accountability to the board. People can we look for the board to be involved in the class size conversation, just as much as look to us be involved in the budget conversations. So we looked at it and said, how can we look at a policy that allows the board transparency to what's happening inside the classrooms in terms of sizing the classrooms? Recognizing the collective bargaining agreement drives the relationship, but also putting accountability for that judgment with the school board. After all, we're the ones elected, the citizens of the committee, and we should represent those interests. So, what we came up with was a policy that does just that. It drives the relationship within the union, management relationship as exists today, but where the policy or the conditions would be outside the contract threshold, we're asking for is to bring visibility to the board. Beginning of school year, so Superintendent would come forward to the board and say, "After this, looking at what we can do, I have a choice. Either I can have class sizes beyond the limits of the contract in a couple of classes," which we've had that in a couple of years now, "or I need to hire staff to offset it." I've done as much maneuvering on this as I can. My principals and my counselors have done the work necessary to sort it all through the process and to get to the best staffing solution we have, but something comes down to either we're gonna have one or two classes beyond the standard that we want to have, or we need to hire staff. And that is a question we thought the board should be involved with. So the board in this is, "Yes, we're fine with increasing class size." So if parents upset, students upset, teachers upset, if you're sort of the board because we're the ones making that call. Or the board says, "No, you know, that's a concern. I'd like you to spend additional funds to hire more staff to reduce class size down." We know it's gonna impact the fund balance, but that's what we need to do for the best interest of the district. So that's the frame of reference we worked through to get that point in time. We've had this conversation on policy for the last six months. We discussed it twice with this board the whole course of the year. And as Karen actually described, you need to carefully measure twice and cut once on this, and so we looked at last year's numbers, and then we wanted to wait till this year's numbers to get to where we are today. So Scott, I'll turn it over to you, in terms of what the intent would be if we'd had it in place today.
The policy itself really starts with a philosophical statement associated with, you know, the values of the organization, and really indicated we would prefer to have low class size. And that's really been a driving force, and frankly, from a practical standpoint, the last two years, we've worked to do it. You get really to two sections when it gets to a discussion about the policy itself, and so, as trustee's ever talked about, you know, we've kind of crafted a policy that not only captures the fact that philosophically we want to reduce our class size or have low class size, there's a couple of checkpoints associated with that. It doesn't mean that the policy now, since we're very hard and fast, will associate with our class size. Those are provided for in our collective bargaining agreement. They've been in there for quite some time. The policy itself actually articulates that in the section above, kind of in the middle there, and highlights not only the issue of class size, but talks specifically about the contract language associated with that. However, it kind of goes beyond that, and if you look kind of at the middle of that policy, it talks about corrective relief for action when we proceeded promptly, when classes were enrollment outside of the desired range, and essentially gives some parameters around what that looks like. And if you look at the memo that was included in the board packet, we talked about our highest class size. So what I want to be clear is, the class size policy really talks about the highest class size in an individual class. So we have collective class size, now using the kindergarten as an example. Our collective class size is 20.5. We typically talk about averages when we're talking about class size. For this particular policy, we're talking about the highest specific class in a certain area. And so, for example, they have 21 is the highest in that area. The issue, as we look at our, we have then, we have our class max, what we call our max 12% overage, and then we have a flex cap. And essentially, what we've established is that a policy that anything over the max 12% overage, between that and the flex cap, would be an area where we would need to have a conversation with the board as to whether or not we want to go there, whether or not we want to add staff. And that kind of gets, that moves us a little bit further and tighter than where we're at with our contractual language with the collective bargaining unit. To make a long story short, in the event that we are in a situation, and I would say this year would be that situation, where we would come and advocate for some variance from our policy, or at least an understanding of the board, and as trustee's ever talked about, kind of an accountability and transparency. Currently, in grades nine through 12 in the core areas, so we're looking, focused on our core areas, we have five sections that are running above 35. We have a section of English 11 at 38, we have a section at 37, and then we have three sections of US History at 37, for a total of five sections. Understand, we have about 196 sections in the first trimester. So essentially, if we look at the 196 sections, our average class size within the 196 sections is 29.7. However, we have five sections that, for a variety of reasons, are slightly above them. Our, we would, in talking with principal, how we would have advocated to say, "Okay, we'd like the board to understand those are over, and accept that those will be over." Typically, school student schedules are driven by not only that class, because we have two options. We can remove students from the class, or we can add additional sections. And we felt that the return on investment would be best today. We're gonna allow those additional students in those classes, in those specific areas, because we've identified who the teachers are, we've identified who the students are, and if we were to move those students, it would impact their schedules and their ability to get to the pace and the progression of classes that they were interested in. So we would have presented a resolution asking the board to approve the movement of those three, pardon me, those five sections to be slightly over the 35, still below the 42, which is the flex cap number. All of that would have been done within the first 15 school days. So essentially, we'd be taking action on the second meeting in September annually based on this. There'd either be a report out that there's, we're below, which would be certainly our intent, or would we be saying we want to add, we want to, the board to determine how we want to mitigate the issue, in this case, would mitigate the issue of the five sections.
So Scott, we're below the 10%?
We are below the 10%, yeah.
Okay, so actually, the policy says 10% threshold is acceptable.
Is acceptable.
So actually, we're not, we're within the frame of.
We wouldn't necessarily have exercised that second, yeah, that's a good point, yeah. I do feel like, particularly because the idea of accountability and transparency is important for us to come forward in these types of situations. I looked back, last year, we had slightly higher, 30.1 was our average in the first trimester last year, and the year before that, it was even higher, so I think you were kind of watch this year to year. It's about having a conversation, and I think that's why the policy starts with that philosophical statement associated with our desire.
We look to have the policy be implemented before September of next year to allow administration time to work through the process in terms of implications. There's also some work being done that will get talked to about in December, I think. Talks about changes to scheduling process for next year. So the intention was to implement for next fall because of the changes coming out about for school administration in terms of scheduling, so that they have an expectation to work against come next fall. So that it's something that's in plot, in place, that they can recognize that and deal with that, you know, kind of frame of reference.
Todd?
Just a thought, I mean, we'd consider this will be an issue at each trimester, I would think.
Yep.
Something that we need to be reviewed.
And it kind of, kind of.
For each scheduling period.
Highlights that, yeah, every 12 weeks, which essentially focuses in, if we get into a situation where after the start of the third trimester, where there's additional enrollment, it does talk about that, you would not make changes following the last 12 weeks, kind of thing. And there are also, it provides where there are always some nuances. There may be a specific issue associated with a class that we want to, it talks about stacking classes. If you look at some of our art classes, it appears they have really high numbers, there's actually multiple classes going on at the same time, so it addresses some of those nuances, so it's a great point, yeah. And I, you know, we tried to craft it in such a way that meets all the needs.
Excuse me. Are those five sections, do you know which sections are like AP courses?
None of them are. The three are US History, so certainly will be a 10th grade US History course, not AP. And then the other two are English 11, straight English 11, so with society.
Any other questions or comments from board members? I'd like to thank the Policy Committee chaired by trustee Zimmer and Vice President Hapton and Secretary Carter. I'd like to thank the policy committee chaired by trustees Emmer and Vice President Hapton and Secretary Carter. I think they were very cognizant to make sure that we're not micromanaging the administration. But on the other hand, when it comes to class size, we've heard it loud and clear from the community and the parental community that it's a concern. And that concern should be brought to the board, and the ultimate responsibility should be with the board when it comes to class size. So I think we've found that balance. We're not trying to hamstring the administration in former fashion. And certainly, we will look to your guidance on these issues very heavily when these issues come before us. If there's no other questions or comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have three discussion items tonight. The Michigan Scorecard Review, Assistant Superintendent Latch.
I'm over here now. Oh, yeah. Okay. Thanks for having me to present this tonight. So what we're talking about today is the fact that every district and every school in the state of Michigan has what is known as a scorecard now. And that's a new system that's changed in the state of Michigan. So we thought that would be important to go over that with all of you tonight, even though it is a fairly complex process and it's new, so that lots of districts and schools are still trying to figure out, well, what, you know, what does this scorecard mean? We're going to go over it tonight. You do have a handout, it's in black and white, so it doesn't really give you the full effect, but opportunity to take some notes if you do have questions as we go. So to go back a little bit in a timeline, before 2001, school accountability really just looked at overall proficiency rates in reading and mathematics. And they didn't spend as much time looking at growth in districts. Like, you know, in Celine, we were always achieving at a very high level. And at, you know, at that point, that always looked great for our district and moving forward. Then in 2001, No Child Left Behind was passed, and this notion of increasing the proficiency rate so that 100% of all of our students would be proficient by a certain year was put in place. Well, what happened was, no districts were really meeting that, that by the specific timeframe, they were not going to meet that target. So the state applied for a waiver, as did a lot of states, and it was adopted by the federal government so that Michigan would have a new scorecard, which had some different parameters on which they would judge a district and schools. And that is on overall and student groups continued, and they have one of these annual measurable targets. And this includes the bottom 30% of students as a new student group, which is important in our case and something we need to look at. And it also looked at writing, science, and social studies scores were added along with reading and mathematics. So that's where we are now moving forward. This new accountability system, like I mentioned, was the waiver that was applied, and it replaces the system that was in place to try to get all kids 100% proficient in these areas. Now it reads that schools and districts are expected at 85% of all students and student groups proficient on the state assessment by 2021. So there's this timeline put out to try to say that every student subgroup and students will hit an overall proficiency rate of 85%. Talks about student groups defined as any group of 30 or more students who share economic, ethnic, limited, English proficient, students with disabilities, other characteristics. And that matters significantly in our scorecard, because we do have over 30 in a number of areas, and we need to look at that coming up. Schools and districts have been assigned these annual measurable objectives, so they literally are drawing the timeline. For example, if a subgroup is at 67% proficiency, they're trying to map out how long it would take them to get to 85% proficiency and determining how much progress that subgroup should make each year along that timeline moving up to 2021. So they're looking at that in all these subgroups and the overall population of students. So now, there is a system in place where schools and districts have this color coding. And with green being the top score, obtaining 85% or greater of possible points. And in a minute, I'm going to show you an example of our middle school in our scorecard there. Lime is this 70%, but less than 85%. Yellow, which is the most common, 60 to 70% of the possible points. Orange is at least 50%, but less than 60. And then red is attaining less than 50% of the possible points. And we'll take a look at a scorecard in a minute from the middle school. Okay, here's our overall scorecard results. Our overall district scorecard is yellow. All our buildings are yellow, with the exception of the high school is orange. And so that's because it fell in getting those possible points, yellow was the most common. And in a minute, you're going to see that most of the districts in the state of Michigan are yellow and orange, and that's the case with schools as well. So, you know, at first glance, that says, well, whoa, maybe we have some red flags and some things we need to be concerned about, which I would argue there are some concerns that we're working on. But we're going to dive a little deeper into this so we can understand why the schools are yellow and orange. So it's a system based, partially based on points, and each district earns an overall proficiency percentage, which corresponds to one of the colors in the five color system. And the colors change based upon student participation, proficiency on state assessments, educator evaluation, compliance factors, student attendance, and graduation rates. We typically do really well on participate, participation, educator evaluation, meaning we're following that process, compliance factors with our school improvement plans, which are in place, and our student attendance and graduation rates. So there's really no issue in our scoring there. What ends up happening is some of our proficiency rates, in particular our subgroups, is the reasoning why we're in that yellow and orange category, and we'll take a look at that in a minute. So proficiency participation in student groups have the most impact on overall color. In our case, it's really about proficiency in subgroup areas. Okay, so this is the overall statewide scorecard colors. So out of all the schools in Michigan, 77% of the schools are yellow, 5% are orange, 15% are red, zero are lime, and 3% are green. And you look at the districts, 66% of the school districts are yellow, 9% orange, 21% red, and then 4% are green. So the tendency is yellow. And that's what this slide talks about, this notion that most of the scorecards we're seeing are yellow. And a common example of why a school would be yellow, and in our case, this applies, if a single student group is not on track to reach 85% proficiency, or did not pass over 95% of the population, then that one single subset would automatically drop it down to yellow, and you're going to see some of that coming up with the middle school scorecard. It talks about it being somewhat complicated, which it is, but the notion is that this is a better overall representation of how schools are doing in terms of student growth, whereas the system before was largely based on proficiency for the whole body. Now, the notion here is that we really have to pay attention to some of these subgroup areas upon which we really have to add extra focus. And so that's, in essence, why we have so many school districts that are in this yellow and orange range. We talked about changes to the system, the new bottom 30% student group for proficiency. This group is held to the same annual measurable objective as all the students. So even if you're, you have a group that is only proficient at 23%, they are held to that accountability of reaching 85%. And so each year, they're looking at that timeline and saying, all right, if you've got to go up 6% each year, if that doesn't happen in that subgroup, then that will determine your point loss in the system. So this is the case for our district right here, number four, that we have high overall achievement on state assessments, but this is not apparent in the color designation. That's true. We have very high achievement in our overall student body. Some of the subgroups are where we're losing points in terms of the scorecard. So we're going to take a look at Celine Middle School here. Here's the scorecard for Celine Middle School. So you can see at the top, all students, we got the highest proficiency rating of our whole student body there, which gave us maximum points. But then when you look at subgroups like the bottom 30%, we're not reaching our target growth in science, writing, and social studies. We're economically disadvantaged. We aren't reaching that in math, science, partially doing that in social studies. And then students with disability, we're having, not reaching those targets. So even if the student's proficiency rate might be at 70%, and you might say, well, that's on track to get to 85%. The growth for that particular year was not enough when they were doing the lime to determine how to get to 85%. And therefore, that's impacting the number of points for the particular school. Also, down here, you look at this idea of educator evaluation, full points, compliance, full point, and attendance. So all of those things are getting maximum points for that. But they're putting so much emphasis on the subgroups that it's hard to reach that 100-point total, so it's difficult. And in this case, so again, Celine Middle School, very high achieving. There's some subgroup areas that we need to work on, and we continue to do that. This is just another chart that shows some of the percentage rates amongst the groups in Celine Middle School, and we're not going to go into great depth on this. But you can see, for example, down here in students with disabilities, 69% of the students with disabilities were proficient. But it's not, it didn't move enough to say that they're on track to be 85% proficient. And so that, that one area, and you say, well, 69%, it seems like that's well on the way to 85%. But that area was given a score of zero. And that's what the, or the red and the yellow mean, that those are areas where we did not get points for that, or we only got partial credit for that. You look at all students here, we have high proficiency in reading and math. And even though that science score of 55% proficiency, that's well above the state average on that particular assessment. So Celine Middle School, high overall achievement, subgroups in the bottom 30%, special education, and economically disadvantaged. Still have a gap in achievement that we're trying to work on as we move forward to 85% being an achievement by 2021. You look at our overall achievement, this is our top to bottom rankings, still have excellent achievement. Celine High School in 97 percentile, Harvest 92, Heritage 90, Celine Middle School 86, Woodland 82, and Pleasant Ridge 77. So we're still in the top tier of schools across the state of Michigan, and it's what's known as top to bottom rankings. We go back to the scorecard again, this is a repeat slide, but again, we're looking at yellow for the district, yellow in all the buildings except for orange in the high school. And I want to focus in on the high school, because the high school has a very interesting twist to this entire thing. So Celine High School is known as a reward school and was designated that again this year, which is actually a very high honor. And so what a reward school is, is it's compared to other high schools in peer districts that have similar demographics. So we're not talking about only peer districts locally in Los Angeles County, we're talking across the state. And some examples of this are Eastern High School, which is Forest Hills out in the Grand Rapids area, very high achieving Rochester Adams, Rochester Community Schools, Troy High School, Chelsea's in our group. But we, it's looking at groups that have these similar demographics. And there's 28 other high schools being compared to this. And in this peer district, Celine High School is achieving at well above the pace of the other peer districts, and therefore, well, there's a few other ones that are in that top, top tier. But that, you know, they're receiving a reward school rating, which is a great honor. Then you look, you say, yes, but there's this orange rating for the overall scorecard. That's based on a number of the subgroups that are still not meeting that target growth. And Principal Helber and I have worked over the summer to make sure that we're developing a plan to help address some of that in that we're trying to make sure that the professional development, the school improvement plan is designed around, you know, really personalizing learning, differentiated instruction, co-teaching, performance assessment, and really getting at how we're going to get better to help all kids learn. So we really do have a target and a focus on this. But it shows you the variance of, you know, an orange scorecard, an orange scorecard does not tell the story, the whole story of Celine High School. Certainly, there's some things we need to work on, but there's overall excellent achievement as a result of the reward school. And that's the bottom line throughout our district, very high achievement. We certainly need to address some of these gaps that are, that we need to work on. You know, certainly, we want to take all our students and make sure they're achieving at a higher level. So I wanted to make sure everybody knew that story tonight and we could discuss it. So that's the extent of it. Does anybody have any questions about this?
I was just reading something the other day that they may move away from the color system and go to a letter system.
They used to have a letter system. And you get an A, B, C, or D.
Kind of like homeland security here a little bit.
Yeah, this is their first year doing this, and there's, you know, I will say, there's quite a bit of debate amongst administrators and teachers saying, you know, is this a valid method of doing this? It's their first year in this system. And I think time will tell as we move forward with it, but this is the system, and we're working through it.
Let me ask you a question, you know, because they have this color-coded system, or they may go to a letter system. Is the focus on the subgroups driving and perhaps forcing resource allocation within the district? And if so, how?
Well, I think you do want to say that you should put your resources in areas of greatest need, but also in areas that will have the biggest impact. So we're trying to do that. We're saying, well, how are we designing a professional development model? I mean, it should be based at getting at some of these areas that we feel need greater access. Another example of that is Dallas Bowl. At the kindergarten, first grade level, we put significant resources into trying to identify our average population very early on, getting reading screenings in place, and really adjusting instruction and intervention very early, and we're putting more money down there. So there is the truth that resources, that we allocate more resources at certain levels where we feel there's greater need. But you also would say that we do that at the lower level, because we think there could be a great impact if we get to students very early on.
I think the point about the policy driving, the scorecard process driving education policy is correct. There is an effort to create a system that will force districts to evaluate their practices internally and using a scorecard methodology that will do that. The most fervent opponents of this type of scoring system have come from traditionally high achieving districts. Oakland County is somewhat in a battle with the state in the, over these types of scoring systems, because they don't consider them valid measures in terms of student achievement.
Yeah, that's true. And, but I don't think, sure, we shouldn't ignore that information. We just have to consider the overall picture and say, hey, we feel like we're doing great things in the district. However, let's not ignore that we have some areas that we need to improve in. And like Scott's saying, that may largely be the intent. High achieving districts still need to look at some of these populations, the subgroups of students, and say, those are really areas that we need to put greater focus.
Scott?
I would agree with that and say that the information is very valid, and there is a dangerous potential for someone to say, okay, well, we need this school to be green. Let's move this, these subgroups into a separate building so that that school can now be green. And I think that is a dangerous possibility that someone could just look at this and go, all right, you know, and take the shortcut to make their building a better building. And so I would say, I would hate, I would hate to see that happen here. You know, I don't think, I don't think there's any intention that it would ever happen here, you know? But I think there are other places where they would do, you know, and just say, all right, we don't, we think that this is invalid. We're going to play the system, we're going to make changes so that we get, you know, all green across our systems. And children would suffer from that. And there will be people who will come to, come and say that this is invalid because it is forcing those sort of decisions.
And that could happen in other districts. I'm not sure there's no decision.
No, there's nothing, yeah. I mean, I wouldn't stand for it. I'm sure we've got other board members here who would, and plenty of citizens who would stand up and say, that's not the purpose here.
Right.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah. Reality is, any evaluation system you have, it's got pros and cons and strict uses to it, that there is no perfect evaluation tool. You know, it's all just a matter of learning what the tool is and applying it. Couple of things jumped out at me, looking at last week's, or two weeks ago's presentation. Looked at counselor scores and looking at the bottom 30% students with disabilities. Is there any correlation there in terms of our counselors being able to have the time to work with the students that have more struggles? The other part of the story is, urban lore is that Celine is a place that takes care of kids with special needs. So families move to Celine for that reason. And look at our score in that area, is that? And look at our score in that area, is that, is the urban law true? And, and is that an impact on the score that we have?
Well, we, I mean, to answer that part about students with disabilities, even though those are areas that are concerned, our scores are traditionally, and still are, much higher than most of the other districts in Special Ed in the county. So, so it's, it, I mean, there is some truth to saying, you know, students in Celine, students with disabilities are still scoring higher than many of our peers, that's definitely true statement. It's just that, that, that gap to get to eighty-five percent still exists, and, and we need to work on that. But I can, I can tell you that our special education staff, you know, Kevin, our special education director, I mean, they work really hard to, to maximize everything we can do for students, and we'll keep plugging along with that. A lot of this is, we need to make sure we're integrating it with all the general education teachers, and make sure that we are all, you know, moving in the exact same direction to help the students.
I also heard some concerns about the, the tool as it applies to assessment of students with disabilities, whether there is a, a good tool, or there's other approaches that should be used with that student population.
Right, I mean, it is, there's, there's different elements of this. There's MEET, which is the traditional assessment test given up through ninth grade, and there's NEAT Access, which is a little bit of an adjustment for students with special needs, and then there's MY Access, which is students that have even greater needs. So there is some adjustment there, but, but you're, you're right, David, in that, you know, the, is, is that paper and pencil version of that static testing the best way for seeing what, what those students can do? You could argue that maybe it's not, and they, they continue to look at different examples. I know that the movement towards smarter balance assessment, which is still in limbo, but is scheduled to go still two thousand and fourteen and fifteen, where these assessments will be online, have an adjustment ability for students with special needs as they take the assessment. So we'll see how that plays out.
How are the counselor, how do they have time to spend, spend their time with what's on their plate today? Is there?
Well, I think there is, you know, you look at the bottom thirty percent, and if we are looking at risk factors, Principal Halber's doing something in the area of what's known as RTI, responding to intervention, where they're, they're actually screening, trying to determine who are those students in the bottom thirty percent that have these specific risk factors, so they can get, you know, to help them as soon as possible when they come to the high school. Still have the Jump Start program, trying to transition students in. So there certainly is more data to, to work with those students. But yeah, we still need to try to offer maximum support, and that is counselors, social workers, our own teaching staff, our administration. You know, we can never have enough support, and we need to keep working on it.
I'm interested in three months, six months from now, getting an update on where we're at with that, some, with the progress we're making.
And the support regardless.
Yeah, yeah. To make sure that, you know, our teachers need support from everybody to be successful, and our students need support from everybody to be successful, and I'd like to get some visibility into what we're doing there, to, to, to make sure we're making progress. Because it is a subgroup, it's easy to have our, you know, fifteen merit scholars here and say, you know, that's what we are, but we also have thirty, thirty percent that we have to make sure we also bring to the system successfully.
That's, that's something that we've talked about briefly before, is having the ability to identify who are the students that are having issues, and to be able to provide an individualized plan for each student. And that's where I think the technology that we're, that this is highlighting, we've got a subgroup of students that need help.
And that's, that's been identified more than ever now, especially at the kindergarten and third grade, but when, when students are coming in, we truly are getting a picture very early on. Whereas in the past, we may have waited a while to see, you know, where they're at halfway down the road in kindergarten, and, and should we make adjustments. Before students even come into the district now, we have screenings before school starts, where they meet with teachers and go through a process, where, where are students? Because students coming in kindergarten, they're all different spots, and we can already tell where are these at-risk factors that we need to identify.
And you made it very clear, and I appreciate the research and work that you've done, that by the time they're to third grade, if they haven't reached that point, then they may never be able to make up that gap.
It just highlights the early learning that this conversation we had recently, and, you know, you look at the income levels, if families qualify for support, that's right smack dab on the average family income in Celine. So, you know, we have a lot of young people coming into the district that early learning literacy initiatives have started, you know, clearly, we need to focus on that, you know, as a, as an intervention strategy.
And we, we feel like those are going to be paying off very soon, because we've really been after that, the last three years, a lot of those students are now moving into, you know, third and fourth grade, where we really are going to see a little bit more on, on some of the assessments. And, you know, when Sue Fenn's presenting about Pooh Corner and the need to beef up the Great Start Readiness Program, we've now got that program to capacity, and we need to continue, identify at-risk students that really need our support and help them move forward. We're, we're more aggressive with that than we've ever been.
Any other questions or comments for Steve? Thank you.
Thanks.
Trustee Zimmer, policy committee update?
The, we talked about the class size. The other topic dealt with concussions and athletic activities. There is a, a need for us to make modification and/or create policy dealing with concussions. Anybody who's been involved in athletics recognizes that concussions happen, and, you know, I know a couple young athletes that, that were very good athletes, that had discontinued athletes before their senior year in high school because of concussions they, they had. So I know personally, that it's a, it's a big deal. Question is, how do they best go at it? And so, we just started the conversation in that regard. Scott Buskow brought forward information last meeting, and there's an awful lot of work to do in that area to make sure we understand it all.
I would, I would suggest that we look to the MHSAA in that area. They've done a lot of, a lot of work in that area, a lot of research. Kurt, you're probably, you're probably aware of that. And they, they may even have some suggested policy for school districts to follow.
The real question is, how do you do the education? Do you educate the educators, educate the coaches, educate the parents, educate the students? Who do you educate, and how do you do that education? You know, because it's, because you have, you know, I know more than one parent that when their child said, I have a headache, I'm not feeling good, I think I have concussion, the parent says, oh, Johnny, buck up, get back out there, you know, because of macho sport. And when the kids found out that they had a concussion, and the kid had stopped sports, those parents were crushed, that they realized that they had done the wrong thing, but they didn't know what they didn't know. So the question is, you know, how do we do that? And I don't know where, where our responsibility should be and where it shouldn't be, and that's, that's kind of the conversations we're going through today. No good answer right now.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Heinig is absent this evening from the Budget Committee. Karen, do you, I know there's an upcoming meeting.
Yeah, Tuesday, the fifteenth, at five o'clock.
Okay. The chair will entertain a motion to authorize items A through F as part of the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Chief.
Support.
And Todd. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Items scheduled on the next agenda, which is our work session.
When we bring forward a kind of an innovation in education night, we're going to have an opportunity to hear from a variety of educators and administrators from across the district about some of the innovative practices that are occurring in Celine, and what are those areas we're, we're focused on. Some of the information that was discussed at the Next Generation Classroom's event on Wednesday at the Foundation, what we brought forward, as well as staff and other areas, about what are those practices that we see coming down the, down the road, and how do we, how do we anticipate they will impact our district? So I'm excited about this week, it should be fun, a lot of, a variety of speakers and a variety of staff here to, to present to us, so exciting.
That was, I think for those of us who were at the luncheon and viewed that presentation, it was, it was good, and it'd be good for us to maybe get that for a second time for some of us, but get a little more in-depth and ask some questions about it, but it was, it was very exciting.
And just a, a point of note, we do have another meeting coming up between now and the next meeting, October fourteenth, the shared services meeting. I did pass out a copy of the combined report from the Ad Hoc Committee for the City and Schools, so you have that hard copy for you to review prior to next Monday, when it's coming up.
Yeah, that's, that's on Monday, seven o'clock, at the, at the city council chambers. And then, when, when were we going to have Plant Moran in?
Plant Moran will be in the first meeting in November, November twelfth, we'll have our audit.
Okay. And then also on November twelfth, I would suggest that we do Superintendent Graydon's quarterly review, so we will have a closed session that evening for that quarterly review.
The, the policy.
Yeah, we have an update on that. Mr. Ellis?
Yeah, that's, that'll be, Mr. Graydon and I talked about that, our target is to have that for you by the first meeting in December, or the workshop meeting in December, so I'd get the first committee meeting scheduled for the sixteenth. We've got a group that's representative of varsity sports, club sports, male and female sports, et cetera, coaches, parents.
Excellent. I got my two signs.
There you go.
Excellent. Okay, this is a second opportunity for a member of the public to address the board briefly for up to three minutes. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address the board this evening? Okay, the next meeting of the Board of Education will be held on Tuesday, October twenty-second, at six-thirty here at Liberty. And with that, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Chief. Support.
And Todd. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting over.